Well, they've bought everything. I'm on the road. That's one hundred dollars a month. So, I probably just, that's just, I was just retired. He said, Carl will come in and we'll agree. I'll be all set. It was not very near. She said, well, I'll kid, but you guys say David was over here. The tight team is lighter too. You know, but it's always looking somewhere else.
Well, I, I.
For my.
Yeah, I do. We got Jim Lee first. I'm so scared of him for that.
Plus, we sold everything.
Oh, yeah.
Early breakers. Scott was, this is probably, that's a grand pass to him. We got married, three of us, Scott, we got married for a month or two. We're running together, silver, silver, made us, was trying to think about ours. This is really fun. Scott, I, he took our, Mark, he took Shannon. On her, on his. And it'll show through as far as, yeah, spend on profits.
Call this meeting to order and ask that you please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. And welcome to the Leesburg City Council meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We welcome you this evening. We will now turn our attention to item number three, which is public input. And I don't believe we have anybody that has signed up for public input this evening. So we'll turn our attention to item number four, amendments to the agenda. Mr. City Administrator, do we have any amendments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Turn attention to item number five, the mayor's report. And a couple of things, and David talked about it during the budget hearing a little bit, but I want to expand just a little bit more. I never thought I would be talking this much about a cemetery, but our cemetery board has, they've been working and doing really great things in cleaning things up and preparing things. And I'll tell you, I'm, I just, I know that the Mr. Carey and the others on the board have some incredible ideas coming up, and I just am so impressed because it shows what kind of community we are when we want to respect those of our loved ones who are no longer with us. And anyway, and David did, did nice words on talking about that and all of our boards and commissions, but I want this a good opportunity just to thank all of our board members, our commission members that are working hard to take care of our community. And I just see it every day and appreciate them. We'll, we will turn our attention now to item number six, which is the consent agenda. These items on the consent agenda are routine and enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. There are three items this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Item B is the payroll ordinance number five-five-four-eight, and item C is the purchase order ordinance number five-five-four-nine. Is there a motion to approve, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions on the motion. Roxy, we are thankful that you're back, but I will tell you that David did a fantastic job.
Well, I'm glad we heard that. I can go on again.
You're still not irreplaceable, of course. You are irreplaceable, but anyway, if you would call, roll, please.
Councilmembers Presley?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Wyseal?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Anne Wink?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes. Thank you, council. Motion is approved, and thank you, Roxy. Item number seven, which is the appointments, and we'll ask again our city administrator, do we have any appointments this evening?
Not tonight.
Thank you. Item number eight is the committee of staff reports. Ask once again, we just keep asking you questions. You're making your money tonight.
I am, yeah.
Do we have any committee staff reports this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. And I do not believe at this time we have any old business to discuss. Item number ten, which is the new business, there are several items. We will begin with item A. Item A, ordinance number five-five-five-zero, standard traffic ordinance. And I will recognize Roxy Shugren, our city clerk.
Published by the League of Kansas Municipalities since nineteen sixty, the standard traffic ordinance are what most of us refer to as the STO. It's an efficient economical way to regulate traffic in Kansas cities. Each year, the League publishes the latest version of the STO book for Kansas cities addressing traffic violations, any of the changes or updates that were made after the legislative session. The following sections were modified in this fifty-second edition. New will be section forty-point-three, passing stationary vehicles displaying hazard or caution signals, and then amended would be section one-one-four-point-five, lawful operation of worksite utility vehicle, and section two-zero-one-point-one, failure to comply with the traffic citation. And as part of your packet, the League puts together an article that outlines all of those changes with a little bit more detail. And so if you want more information about those specific changes, it was included in that. So that is just looking for a recommendation, a motion to approve ordinance number five-five-five-zero adopting the standard traffic ordinance book for two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Roxy. Other questions for Roxy?
Thank you for including me, please.
You're welcome. And we will share those, that article. I have permission from the League to put that on the website. We'll also link it. We'll do a brief little thing on Facebook and then link it to the website where you have more information.
Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, is there a motion to pass ordinance number five-five-five-zero?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we will ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers Peterson?
Yes.
Wyseal?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Anne Wink?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. We'll now turn our attention to item B, ordinance number five-five-five-one, Uniform Public Offense Code. And again, I will recognize Roxy Shugren, our city clerk.
Just on the STO, the League of Kansas Municipalities publishes the Uniform Public Offense Code that contains approximately a hundred public offenses that can be adjudicated in municipal court. While maybe in the provisions parallel state law, UPOC also contains offenses that are frequently enforced within the cities. Each year, the League publishes this latest version designed to provide comprehensive public offense ordinance for all cities that includes changes and updates after the legislative session. The only change for two thousand and twenty-five is section six-point-seven-point-two, trespassing a critical infrastructure facility.
Are there questions for Roxy? Seeing no questions, thank you, Roxy. The recommendation is for a motion to approve ordinance, ordinance number five-five-five-one, adopting the Uniform Public Offense Code book for two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Are there questions on the motion?
What is it? Trespassing critical infrastructure facility? What is it? What is that? If it's a hard answer, never mind, I'll table it. No, not that.
Changes are loosely defined as being expanded to include more types of facilities, support structures, and related equipment buildings, but we don't know what the, I mean, based on what the League put out, we don't know the penalties, the, you know, what, what it was expanded to, how broad that is becoming versus how narrow it may have been before. We can look it up later.
I have the entire book.
I'll check that out later. Thank you very much. All night readings.
Is that?
You have just called a question.
Yeah, it's, and, and as we all, or hopefully we all know that the League passes this, it goes through a process. It doesn't just become part of city codes across the state. It has to go through this process, so at least we are able to look at it, that our staff members are able to look at it and say, yes, this is, this looks good, this doesn't look bad, we shouldn't do this. So it's, it's a process built into it so that we are, are protected. You know, it doesn't mean that, you know, that every, that Roxy knows every part of this. She probably knows a lot of it, but I'm sorry that I picked on you, Roxy.
I did that for this department.
But anyway, so that's, that's the point. With further questions from the council? Seeing no further questions, Roxy, I'll ask you to please call roll.
Councilmembers Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Swanson?
No.
Anne Wink?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wyseal?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Anne Wink?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council, and thank you, Roxy, for that. We will now turn our attention to item C, the public works backup generator. I will recognize Jenny Walker, our public works director. Welcome, Denny.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I've come to get to this evening to talk to you about our standby generator. Recently, we noticed that it would not switch over. It was during outage, the generator will start and run, but it will not switch over. So we contacted Pestinger, had them come look at it, and found that the rotor stayed around the housing would need to be replaced at a cost of ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. So we had them quote us a new one, basically about the same size that we have, and a quote for a new one is about, there is seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five ninety-four. They also quoted us thirteen KW, or I mean, twenty KW, and we just don't need one quite that big. The one, the size that we have works fine for, for what we need. We contacted four companies in total, three of them responded, one did not. Staff is recommending a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a thirteen KW standby generator from Pestinger for seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Are there questions for Denny?
You said it would kick on and run, but wouldn't switch over.
Right.
Switch over, you mean?
It, it would, the motor will run, but it won't switch over and it won't generate.
Oh, okay.
So they found a small crack in the housing. There could have a lot of moisture to get in there. So we plan on, we get a new one, we're going to try and do something a little different, protect it a little better.
Sure.
So.
What is this providing backup for?
It's for the, for the building, and, you know, that way, if there's an outage, if there's an outage where the building is, they can get the doors open, they also have lights so they can see, get whatever parts that you, it also runs our computers, which when there's an outage, we have, we split like a scanner computer, and it'll show us where the outages are, if they're like isolated outages too. So, you know, we have to have, we have to have power at all times in that building, so.
Further questions? Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Council, the recommendation is for a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a thirteen KW standby generator from Pestinger for seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Wyseal?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wyseal?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Anne Wink?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Ebel?
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 And it started last year, and we charged it in the spring, and it began like summer, and you know how we tend to do, and we have expenses in this building, kind of hate to think about more than that. We've had a lot of trouble with AC over time, which has been remarkably better this year. And even late last year, we had the cleaning done. But we went ahead and we recharged it again in the spring, hoping that that would do the trick, and it has not. So we decided it was time to look into having it checked, to see if we could find where the leak was. VCS, who is our licensed repair and installer of LG equipment in this region, came in and took about four days going through that system, just all the replacement, and they did not find anything until the very end of the fourth day. But they believe that replacing this evaporator coil that they've listed, along with the assemblies that go with that, will take care of that problem. They'll be able to recharge the system, and we should be able to go about our business. And what I'm asking for tonight is just approval of the HVAC system leak repair in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars.
Thank you, Holly. Are there questions of Holly from council? Councilmember Swanson?
Spring last year, when it was recharged, we knew the system had a leak then?
We did not know where it was, and we knew it was going to take them a while to find it. And so I think we were hoping that they would be able to find it easily after they charged it. We would see something, and they didn't see anything at that time. We went ahead and realized that they'd be charged at the end of the year. Again, we've spent a lot of money in this system, so we did have to charge it in the spring, and we've had to say that she didn't leak. So they were not sure what, at the time, and it has taken them, I mean, it was substantial work. They thought they were gonna have to cut into the wall to be able to look there and found it, thankfully, before they had to do that. So, yeah, not loved everything it was gonna take. When they asked if they could cut into a wall, I was like, ha, ha, I'd rather not, we can help it, so. Fortunately, they found this in it.
Then what are those costs associated with recharging it each time?
Several thousand dollars, I wanna say it's around three or four thousand dollars.
And we're doing that? Is it twice a year?
We had, just last year, we did it twice, and in this year, we had to do it once, and then this'll be our second time.
And the environmental damage of the refrigerator leaking into the atmosphere?
It's not a great, yeah.
Councilmember Peterson?
I assume the coils would not be covered by any form of warranty?
Our warranty is long past due. We opened that building in twenty thirteen. It had a, like, a two-year warranty was on.
This is ongoing, are there any programs out there as far as like maintenance programs? It's more like insurance where you just know we're gonna be paying five hundred dollars a month or whatever, so they just cover this?
That I'm aware of, I'm checking too.
It seems like this is good business idea.
It's not a great business idea, you have to pay them on it, to the team of what we have. If we paid five, if we had to pay five hundred dollars a month, we would be far ahead of me.
Well, I just, yeah. Don't put, don't put anything into that five hundred, I'm just throwing it out.
He's open mouth, sure, he's on his own side, he's got a dealer wants to make it.
Too close to retirement.
Further questions?
Well, my only, my only concern is that, you know, Stacy said it should eliminate, eliminate the record, the need for recharging it.
I hope.
I suspect they don't issue me kind of guarantee that this is gonna solve the leak, but it's their suspicion, so.
Well, they found leaking when they got to this, so.
Okay.
At, to that point, they found nothing. So that's why it took them, we had, we had granted them three days, and they said we're gonna have to another day, because we just haven't found anything at this point in time. And they were pressuring them and testing a lot of areas, so.
Further questions?
Part of that also is, I'm hearing, it didn't actually check the entire system, parts of the system, that they would need to check normally are inside walls where there could be additional leaks that we don't know about.
Possibly, yep. Possibly. That was the last area that they wanted to check, if they had to turn it up. So we had to take into account repairing all of that, which also would mean repainting way more than just that wall.
Any further questions? From the council. Seeing no questions, thank you, thank you, Holly. Counsel, the recommendation is for approval of the HVAC system leak repair in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Is there a motion? There's a motion, a second, are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions on the motion, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers Peterson?
Yes.
Andrewway?
Yes.
Swanson?
No.
Evil?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Lysel?
Yes. Motion passes, counsel, thank you, and thank you, Roxy. Now turn our attention to item F, which is the Hillings Fest special event permit. And we have Tessa and Avery here, and I almost feel like we have to apologize to them for making them wait even until after the air conditioner is talked about. And with that, we are happy you're here, thank you, appreciate all your hard work that you are currently involved in for the next few months. I will recognize Roxy Shubron, our city clerk, for this topic.
So the city has received a special event free-for-all beverage permit for October seventeenth and eighteenth from Whiskey Wagon, who would like to operate a beer garden in the request of the St. Kelly's Fest committee. The location of the event will be at apartment lot to the east of City Hall, but would also be extended into Lincoln Street for Saturday evening during live music. Whiskey Wagon will be operating its staff in the beer garden, will be checking IDs and issuing first bans to those of age, as patrons enter the area. Requested hour of operation can be from eleven AM to ten PM both days. Different from in the past is Whiskey Wagon is already a licensed caterer through the state, so process is a little bit different from my side, but it makes things a lot easier, I think. But as we've also discussed at the July twenty-first, twenty-five council meeting, staff would like to recommend allowing Whiskey Wagon to serve liquor at the beer garden during the Hillings Fest. This event can serve as a pilot to evaluate the feasibility and impact of liquor service at future special events. So staff is looking for motion to approve Whiskey Wagon's special event permit for October seventeenth and eighteenth, and to allow the addition of liquor sales in conjunction with C and B sales.
Thank you, Roxy. Are there questions for Roxy from the city council?
Still gonna be called the Beer Garden, or is it gonna be called the Beverage? Sorry.
Probably still Beer Garden.
That's a surprise.
Further questions, Roxy? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Roxy. The recommendation is for a motion to approve Whiskey Wagon's special event permit for October seventeenth through eighteenth, and to allow the addition of liquor sales in conjunction with the C and B sales. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Andrewway?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lysel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Evil?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, counsel, and thank you, Roxy. And we thank you, Avery and Tessa Probst, for being here this evening and for all your work.
May the force be with you. As a former chair, Godspeed.
Let's, let's give them a hand, we'll probably have a. Counsel, that is, yes, there are.
It's a lot of work.
I was gonna ask one of them, I knew, okay, I knew both of them would know that. That's neat, mark it off on their calendar every morning. Councilmember Swanson, did you have?
I was waiting for item twelve.
All right, so, thank you for that. And counsel, we are now, we, we have, item number eleven is executive session, and I do believe we have a, a, something to speak about in executive session, we do that rarely. And so we will, council member Peterson?
I move under KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B two to recess and to executive session for fifteen minutes to consult with the city attorney regarding contractual issues, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The, this executive session will include the members of the city council, the city attorney via phone, the mayor, city administrator, and the public works director. The open meeting will resume at?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, no, seven fifteen P M in the council chambers.
So we have a motion.
That is a motion?
Yes.
A second.
And all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? Okay, so counsel, we will be in the conference room from now until seven fifteen. We will return to council chambers after that, for the conclusion of the meetings, thank you. Okay, thank you, counsel, and we are now back in open session for a city council meeting. And with that, counsel, I just want, what our procedure will be this evening is we're going to continue with this meeting, and then we're going to adjourn this meeting at the appropriate time, which is, you know, minute or two. And then we will resume our, our study session, where we will talk about budget. So that's the procedure we will follow. We are now ready for item number twelve, other, other business. Seeing no further business to consider this evening, I will turn our attention to item number thirteen, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor of adjournment this evening signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? We are adjourned, and we will begin our working study session.